Public meeting of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'd ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We recognize a quorum of our board with six members present. Nancy Justman will be joining us shortly, and I believe she was planning to join us by conference call.
Correct.
When that happens, since we've got a member by conference, I'll ask my fellow board members to remind me that I need to take roll call votes for our votes. And so next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. And so it was posted in advance. I would move for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Swiger votes yes. Ms. Justman's absent. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Aragot?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Thank you. We have an approved agenda. And at the top of our agenda, we have an opportunity to recognize first responders, and we're excited to do this. Superintendent Weber is going to walk us through this. Good evening, Superintendent.
Good evening. I'm going to ask that a few people come up and join me. Tom, would you join me, please? This is Tom Wenzloff. And Tom works our East football games and left the press box for what he thought was going to be a regular evening, the evening of September 23rd. When he left the press box, he required immediate medical assistance for a catastrophic cardiac event. I'd like to ask Officer Adam DeLeche, our school resource officer, to join me. Podium. Trainer Kyle Butters. And our school nurse from the high school, Jen Shep. Where's Jen? These three happened to be in the crowd and working along with a lot of other talented people, but they rendered immediate medical aid to Tom and saved his life that evening. So we're really thankful for their physical presence, but that wasn't done alone. And we filled the room tonight, whether it was managing a crowd of students, the general crowd, creating space for them to do their work, calling in emergency responders. The emergency responders themselves, it took a village to save his life that night, and we came to that call. So working the game that evening were Molly Hanks, the East Athletic Director. If you want to just join me. Erin Felber, the West Athletic Director. Tim Harder, our Director of Technology, Library, Media, CTE that evening. We also had Officer Kent Olson, who was garnering aid. A couple people absent this evening. We had Laura Krauzi Amrick, East Assistant Principal, Dave Talma, a teacher and supervisor, as well as Melissa Worth, also a teacher and supervisor that evening. In addition to Adam and Kent, we'd like to recognize Captain Matt Rollinger is here with us this evening, just to recognize his staff and their efforts. So then, West Bend Fire Department personnel that evening. I think I have a few with me. The medic, Steve Stockhausen, Steve with me this evening. Antonio Garola, also a responder. James Heikobeck, James. In addition, people who couldn't be here with us from the Fire Department include medic Kyle Demler and Erin Zulstorff. Also, that evening, the Battalion Chief Medic Command was Mark Forster. Unable to join us this evening were the Fire Chief Police Chief. They are down the hall at a council meeting themselves. Wish they could be here. We'll make sure that they see the video in speaking with them. Just thankful for the efforts of everyone. I know it was important to Tom, his family, his parents, we got, I think, his wife, siblings, a lot of people here that are thankful that Tom could be here with us this evening, too. So I know, first, we'll give everyone kind of a round of applause for their efforts. And then I know Tom has some words that he would like to share.
I'm going to ask my wife, Gail, to come up here. Yeah. I want to recognize, my parents are here. My dad's going to be 96. He said he wouldn't miss it. So he's sitting right over here. I want to thank all you guys. I wrote you a letter. If I can't get it through it, Gail will take over for me. But this is what I wrote to all of you. Says, Dear First Responders, last week, there should have been a funeral in West Bend, and it should have been for me. Had it not been for you, the First Responder Angels, I would not be alive today. Before I thank you, I want to introduce myself. My name is Tom Wenzloff. I've been a lifetime West Bender. I married my high school girlfriend, Gail, and we've been married for over 40 years. We have three beautiful adult children, Scott, Jenny, and Ryan. I've been blessed with many families and friends in the West Bend community. On Friday, September 2022, I was volunteering at the West Bend East Football Game. You all saved my life. Every doctor, and I'm talking cardiologists, internists, specialists, every doctor, the nursing staff, they all told me I only survived because of the excellent team that cared for me before I reached Frehderd Hospital in La Waitosa. I want you to know that you are heroes to me, my family. I have a lot of friends, all my friends. I could not say thank you enough, as all of you saved my life in your respective roles. By saving my life, you gave me a second chance, and I'm not going to waste it. I want you to know I'm not going to waste it. I'm going to continue to do a lot of good for this world. I'm currently just putting my health first, but you're going to see a healthier Tom Wenzloff in the future. So how can I thank each of you? I can't. I really can't. But just know, the Wenzloff family has talked about our appreciation and gratitude for all of you every single day since September 23rd, 2022. You not only changed my life, but the lives of my family and friends. And closed in the envelopes, a medallion for you. And it would be my wish that you place it in a location where you see it often. I hope that you look at it every day and remember, you saved a life. You saved my life. And that you are truly very, very special. If you have a hard day, I want you to remember that you make a difference in what you are doing for our community. I love you. I respect you and have so much gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you to Tom and his family for being here, not just being alive and being here, but for being here tonight to recognize the efforts of many. We're glad that we were able to provide this venue for their recognition and support. I know that was really important to you and your family as a whole. So thank you for being here as well.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We'll give pause for you to do that.
Right. As these folks are exiting, I think it's appropriate for us to say how much we appreciate the individuals, whether it's in law enforcement or education, all those who are not only trained to do this, but decided to actually put that into action. And you talk about making a difference in someone's life. This is a situation where a life was literally saved, so thank you. We'll let these folks exit, and then we will move to our next agenda item. All right. Next on our agenda is public participation, if I remember right. Yes, it is. And while these folks are exiting, I'll just read the public participation comments. I've got, I believe it's a total of nine, public participation comment cards. And so I'll pause for a moment. Are there any other cards? Anyone else who wishes to address this group tonight? All right. Seeing none, we've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the natures and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time. The copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relation to the district. The information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. So what I will do is I'll invite participants forward to speak, and there's a visible timer right there. And what I'll do is, because of the number, I will announce who will be speaking and then who's on deck. So our first speaker tonight is, and I apologize in advance for any of those where, for whatever reason, I can't read the handwriting, but you'll correct me when you're at the podium, Samaria Evans. And then on deck is Avaya Mallett, I believe. All right. So we'll invite Ms. Evans up first. And Ms. Evans, it says that you're a resident of the district and you're a student in the district.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Fantastic. Just want to make sure that your microphone is on there. See the little green light?
Good.
All right. Can we hear her back there? Okay. Good. Excellent. Thank you. And all right. The next three minutes are yours.
All right. So as aforementioned, my name is Samia Evans. I go to West High School, and I am now a senior. If you ask my friends, this is something that I talk about a lot, as I can't really seem to wrap my head around the fact that my high school career is about to be over and that I'll be going off to college soon. It's also something that has really caused me to reflect over my time in the district as I recount the days in kindergarten, sitting on the floor during storytime, or all the awkward forensic stances I attended during middle school. But as I continue to reflect on the laughs and weird memories of my fleeting childhood, I've also been looking back on all the seclusion that haunted me throughout my earlier developmental years when I was still trying to figure out where I'd sit amongst my peers. And to be honest, it wasn't always that great. As we are all aware, the West Bend School District is predominantly white, and there were many times that I often felt alone and isolated amongst my peers, as I all seemed to live a life that I often felt I never quite fit into. And while I have yet to completely escape this aspect of younger me, if I could describe to you the pure warmth that arises from the stomach of 70-year-old me every time I pass them in the hallway with the little Black Lives Matter pin on their backpack, I would. I would tell you how it feels to finally feel seen in a community where you spent your whole life feeling ignored. I would tell you how relieving it is to finally feel understood after you spent every day having to explain yourself. And I would tell you how great it feels to be represented after every day of feeling like you were the odd one out. So I don't think that it solves anything to deprive the past, future, or current me of the delight brought to me by adequate representation, by adequate representation and inclusivity, simply because it makes someone happy. And while I know that these few may not agree with the acts or discussions that make me or other minorities feel welcomed into this community, I don't find anything controversial about accepting or educating anyone on the aspects of identity that diversify humanity. The world is indeed a diverse one, whether you like it or not, and to neglect students who do not fit into the overwhelming demographic would be a dire failure of the district to provide education and excellence for all. Now, I've heard many community members saying that certain actions and discussions in the classrooms make students feel uncomfortable or targeted, and I would agree. But it is not the discussions about unfamiliar cultures or different systems of oppression in our society. No, it is those that ignore the individual experiences of those who are consistently isolated by social majorities and treat children as if they are incapable of learning to tolerate and understand those around them. Listen, no one is saying to hang up anti-Christian or Biden 2020 flags anywhere in the schools. We are simply asking that we all understand the fact that it is no longer 1930, and in order to truly prioritize well-developed minds in all students, we must take the differences between us all and allow them to encourage productive and educational discussions about the complex world that waits us. So district members, I ask that you do what you know is right and fight against those who misdirect you from opportunities of growth that we truly need and tell you that we are not capable. I ask that you listen to your students. Thank you.
Evans, thank you.
Point of order, we'll just have to remind our audience.
Yes. No, appreciate the support. What we like to do is ensure a neutral environment, so what we're going to do is we're going to ask folks not to applaud for the others. And I appreciate your cooperation with that. All right. So we have Avaya Mallett is next, and then Fiona Shaw is on deck. Thank you. Did I pronounce your last name correctly, at least?
You did, yes.
Oh, excellent. Well, Ms. Mallett says here, you are a student also enrolled in our district, correct?
Yes.
Great. Oh, and if I could just pause for one second. Mr. Harder helped us before public participation began to verify that Nancy Justman is on the line, so we'll reflect that in the minutes that she's now present. And the next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Avaya Mallett. I'm a senior at West Bend West High School, and I would first like to thank the school board for taking the time to listen to what I have to say tonight. I began attending the West Bend School District in the eighth grade at Badger. I transferred from Milwaukee School District at 13 years old, and it was a drastic change, to say the least. Coming out here, I knew I would experience societal differences as I was coming from a far more diverse to predominantly white school. But I never fathomed having to push for change almost all four years of my time at the high school. Fighting to feel like I belong in my school is getting pretty exhausting. I am aware that there are individuals within our community who believe that certain representation at the high school and within the district is seen as offensive and/or threatening. As a student who sees firsthand what goes on at school during the day, I do not think it is fair for the outside community to speak on behalf on the 1,000-plus students who walk the halls. All through our life, we are going to run into and have to confront things that make us uncomfortable, upset, or we simply don't agree with. It is inevitable, and I believe that resorting to rid of those things rather than learning to tolerate them only allows for greater polarization within society. Attempting to eliminate something that offends you makes absolutely no change other than offending the other side. And unless that is the intended goal, I do not see how there will ever be a comfortable place for all of our students. I think it is important to recognize that everyone has their own beliefs and values held personal to them, and that it is not a simple solution of getting rid of the ones we don't like. Throughout my high school experience, I have faced many things that make me feel uncomfortable and unwelcome, ranging from certain political messages to personal comments made by students. And while I do not agree or understand them, I know that there are also people who do not agree with or understand why I have black fists pinned on my backpack, which showcases why it is not fair or just to erase one side without erasing the other. I walked the halls of the West Bend High School with minimal representation of people of color, whether it is from school administration to posters in the classroom. We, the minority, are the true uncomfortable ones. The community is worried about their children feeling uncomfortable and threatened in a place where they can turn their heads any direction and see someone who looks like them. But one of the few things I can use to show proudness in my race is considered threatening. Having a Black Lives Matter pin or a rainbow flag is not making a political statement, it is recognizing something we are as individuals. As a community, we want West Bend High School to be welcoming and a safe place for all students. But how can a school be safe when there are people who want to silence us? I believe that taking away the representation of select situations within the school is discriminatory action and is only taking the West Bend School District many steps backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we welcome Fiona Shaw, and on deck is Lisa Sarek. All right. Shaw, thank you. It says that you are a student enrolled in the district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Great. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Fiona Shaw, and I'm a senior at West Bend East. I'm speaking today out of great concern for the learning environment and the integrity of my education in the West Bend School District. The proposed banning of political images in the classroom, which often references Black Lives Matter and pride flags, poses a threat to inclusivity in the West Bend School District and to the quality of our education. The district preaches excellent for all, but this policy threatens that. Minority students, such as students of color and those in the LGBTQ+ community, are already subject to discrimination in their everyday lives, extending to their life at school. According to the National Alliance on Mental Health, LGBTQ youth are more than twice as likely to experience mental health problems, including depression, anxiety, and suicidality. A part of the reason for this is non-inclusive or unsupportive environments. As an LGBTQ+ student, I can tell you that this policy will make our schools feel unsupportive and ultimately unsafe. Additionally, the banning of political memorabilia will impair our learning and our college readiness. Political memorabilia is not used to push the personal opinions of teachers. Instead, it is used as a tool for analysis, for learning, and for the development of students' abilities to understand persuasive arguments. Throughout my four years and many social studies classes, political images have not made students uncomfortable. They have prepared us for exposure to political discussions, which we are bound to experience in college and throughout life. The skills we learn from political discussion are a key part of our college readiness. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Lisa Sarek to the podium, and Makayla Maxwell will be on deck. Sarek, it says that you're a resident and a student enrolled in the district. Is that correct?
This is correct.
Great. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Lisa Sarek, and I'm currently a junior at West Bend West High School. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude for the school board and allowing me to speak this evening. I've spent my entire life in our small city, and I'm currently an active student in the school. Participating in nearly 10 clubs, sports, and extracurricular activities, I know firsthand what an incredible environment our community can be. With this, I've also experienced the immense amount of hate that has been produced and aimed at our minority groups. As a white student of the school district and community, I feel obligated to speak out and use my privilege to help benefit those whose voices are not heard. Within our schools, I have witnessed numerous discriminative actions and messages toward minority groups, specifically people of color, as well as the LGBTQ+ community. Hate within our schools and community is not limited to large acts of discrimination, but can also include subtle remarks in the hallways, name-calling at school events, and other actions that are not as blatant as a swastika at a farmer's market. While many will attempt to place blame on the teachers and staff members for the disruption within our school, the only people to blame are the parents and community members that set these examples for children and students of all ages. Each one of you, community members, has the power to influence our future through the students and children. It is up to you to consciously decide whether to teach us to love or hate, and currently you are teaching us to hate. I, as a student, cannot survive nor thrive in an environment where I do not feel safe or protected. Therefore, I cannot begin to imagine what it is like for the students who are under constant attack from people full of hate. Our community cannot continue to uphold such a heinous reputation. In order to create the community we all should strive for, it is crucial that students and children are exposed to social differences that will be faced in the future. We should be taught to embrace diversity in history rather than push it away and pretend it does not exist. With your help, students can understand how they differ from others and how that can help them coexist in a unified world. Students can understand that diversity does not hinder our education, but rather broadens it. And students can understand that we will all create a more successful environment if we choose to love rather than to hate. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Makayla Maxwell to the podium, and Angela Redell will be next. Hello.
Hello, my name is Makayla Maxwell, and I'm a current senior at West Bend West.
Go right ahead.
At the last meeting, a member of the board alongside community members discussed the barring of political memorabilia and specifically talking about the BLM movement and things referring to the LGBTQ+ community. Taking away and banning political things in the classroom is something I don't support. I'll be a legal adult in eight months and will go out into the real world and be faced with points of view that I don't agree with. Per me being here right now, you cannot ban everything you disagree with and cannot escape the controversy in real life. This school board will be doing a disservice to students in this school district if they shelter us from different opinions. School is the perfect place to learn about how to accept everyone and be tolerant of others. I see political statements that I disagree with every day in the hallway in the high school, and despite this, I don't think banning the political memorabilia is the way to go about it. I don't understand how you can ban such things. How is an American government and politics class supposed to be taught comprehensively without real-world examples that are inherently political? The world as we know it is more politically driven than ever. Whether it be in a career or continuing on to higher education, students in this district will be functioning members of society one day. Politics and political movements are important to everyday life, and events pertaining to them will not go away. Amongst themselves, students discuss politics and other subjects. It's ironic to think that banning political things in the classroom will be supporting students. In reality, the only people it benefits are those wishing to hinder success of students. I believe that this proposal will do more harm than good for students of the West Bend School District, and I hope that members of both the community and the board will recognize the harm that this poses to students and their futures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We welcome Angela Redell to the podium, and then Zachary Kennigs will be next. Welcome. It says that you are a resident and a student enrolled in the district. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. The next three minutes are yours.
Hello, my name is Angela Redell, and I am speaking today in support of the West Bend School District, creating a more supportive and inclusive environment for their students. I, amongst many students and staff, feel that the representation of different people is not at the standard that it should be. Ideas of removing symbols from classrooms that give students the slim amount of representation that we do have would create an even less welcoming space than it already is. Students are constantly harassed based on their race, gender, sexual orientation, and religion amid other qualities that we are not taught about. I urge you to consider that lessons about inclusion and diversity do not hinder one's education. Instruction on this does not make students uncomfortable, distressed, or threatened. Instead, teaching about such only broadens a student's perspective and understanding about how everybody has individual qualities that makes them unique. In this environment where acceptance is encouraged, students can relate school to a friendly environment that they are more likely to succeed in. Students will encounter people of differing attributes in the real world, so exposing them to diverse characteristics now will prepare students for college and career readiness. Now, some may argue that this is indoctrinating our students, but creating a welcoming environment is really the essence of it. Representing students' identities in the classroom makes them that much more comfortable in the space. I feel like this is not prominent enough in schools, and it should not be deemed inappropriate for schools. Students can often resort to school as a welcoming place away from home life, and removing Black Lives Matter and pride flags would revoke that safe place for students to escape when their homes are not accepting of such. When displaying representative items like this, students or staff and faculty should not be attacked as they are trying to create the best learning space possible for their students. I encourage you to think about how students in your schools are affected by these choices instead of attempting to please an audience of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite Zachary Kennigs to the podium, and Noah Becker will be on deck. And it says here that you are a resident and a student enrolled in the district. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. The next three minutes are yours.
All right. So first of all, I'd like to thank
All right, so first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, thank everyone for allowing us to speak here today. And then, hello, my name is Zach Kennigs, and I am also a senior here at West Bend West High School. Similar to the others gathered here today, I've come to speak to you about the issues that we as a community and as a school are, have been up against. And I also like to say that I'd like to keep this brief so that it's not adulterated or tarnished. Namely, what I'm trying to talk about is that there's zero reason that teachers should be attacked for trying to create an environment that promotes where students are kind and understanding, an environment in which people can be themselves, an environment in which kids can be comfortable during the day. We are trying to raise the next generation to work together, to help each other out, and most of all, to be accepting of others. Quite honestly, our differences are where we flourish. I don't understand why we'd want to take away from that. In the school environment, students should be encouraged to be themselves, not restricted from who they are. If kids can't respectfully address their beliefs in school, then where can they? School needs to be a safe place where students can responsibly express themselves, as kids don't get a lot of opportunities to do so. With this comes the idea of kids having things at school that represent them or their beliefs, such as a pride flag, a Black Lives Matter pin, or other symbols of a student's identity. In my experience, I have never seen these tokens detract from my or others' learning, and the idea that they do often seems to be a figmentation. In my experience, having a diverse environment has done the opposite, actually, of allowing diverse perspectives to be heard and more things to be said. If nothing else, different outlooks and identities allows us to learn about others, their viewpoints, and helps us to understand why everyone has the different ideas that they do. When we think about it like this, we can realize that it is necessary to have these different cultural perspectives in a classroom so that we can all understand each other better. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome Noah Becker to the podium, and then our last participant will be Tanya Lor.
Good evening. My name is Noah Becker, and I am a student at West Bend West High School. I am here to ask you all to vote against the proposal to ban Black Lives Matter symbols and pride flags. Students need the support from teachers and other students that these flags and items symbolize. According to the Trevor Project, LGBTQ youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. They estimate that two million queer youth from the ages of thirteen to twenty-four seriously consider suicide each year in the U.S., and at least one attempts suicide every forty-five seconds. That means by the time my three minutes are up, at least four teenagers will have tried to take their own lives. That's devastating. But you can help by giving these young, vulnerable people safe spaces and people to talk to. Staff members and students who have these flags or related items are accepting of students. These students feel safe when they see these flags and items. When I see one of them, I feel cared about and accepted and free to be who I am. My friends and many of the people I've spoken to also see these flags as symbols of progress and acceptance. However, I haven't always accepted or felt accepted at school, and neither have a lot of people. Many still don't. Sadly, many youth access, or lack access to affirming spaces. Only fifty-five percent of LGBTQ youth report that their school is affirming, and only seven, or thirty-seven percent, think that their home is. The Trevor Project's research consistently finds that these young people report lower rates of suicide when they have access to these affirming, kind, accepting spaces. By using symbols of acceptance to show these students that people care about them and want to hear what they have to say, educators and students can help to save lives. All it takes is you to ensure that our schools are safe and inclusive spaces for everyone. Thank you all for your time, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Tanya Lor. Good evening, Ms. Lor. It says you are a parent guardian and an employee of the district.
I am.
All right, the next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. My name is Tanya Lor, and I am a teacher and parent in the West Bend School District. I am speaking tonight as the president of the West Bend Education Association. I'm here to address the false and slanderous narrative being spouted by an anti-teacher group in our community regarding how teachers feel about safety in our schools. It is important to note that not only do teachers work in our district's buildings each and every day, but many of us also have children, spouses, parents, and other friends and family members working in these buildings as well. Teachers want our schools to be safe and secure. If people had simply asked teachers their opinions about safety in our schools rather than making assumptions, they would have learned that teachers want security measures purchased under the guidance of the police, who enact our safety plans, not by a lone individual who read something on the internet. They also would have learned that teachers want to purchase safety equipment that works best with our district's safety plan and within the structures of our specific buildings, so that these purchases actually increase effectiveness should a threat arise in our schools rather than impede emergency personnel. Teachers support increased funding for safety and security in our schools, but they want that money to be spent on security measures that address the real needs in our classrooms and schools as identified by those of us working there and those experts whose job it is to keep us safe. The false narrative about teachers is based on their choice not to vote for a proposal by a community member that dictated the purchase of a specific door lock for all of the classroom doors in our schools. If someone had asked teachers why they didn't vote for this proposal, they would have told you that many of our classrooms have a window pane right next to the door handle and therefore may not be protected by such a lock. Teachers would also tell you that there was not ample research provided to prove that purchasing this lock, these locks, would actually increase security in our schools. Upon further review, it has been found that the locks in question are in fact not approved by the Department of Justice or the Firefighters Association, and that in an article by the DOJ on school safety, it is recommended that they are not used in our schools. A more effective amendment would have simply asked for the levy to be raised to create additional funding for school safety, leaving the important choices of what to purchase to the experts. School safety is such an important issue that it warrants a collective effort by experts across many fields. Decisions should be made based on input from the police and sheriff's department, from school safety experts, from teachers, from facilities directors, from peer-reviewed research, and from our superintendent and district administration. This is how seriously teachers want school safety to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lor was our last speaker tonight, so I'll just pause by thanking all the speakers tonight for complying with our points of order, for keeping to the time limit. We, Board, the Board Policy 187 says we don't immediately respond to comments, but your comments are taken under advisement by the board as we make future decisions. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. All right. This is where we, this is where we pause, and if anyone at this point in time, we realize, has other things and wishes to, wishes to leave, you will not offend us, but we always welcome individuals to stay for the, for this meeting, as it is a public meeting. So thank you. All right. Next is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have minutes of the September twelve, twenty-twenty-two regular board meeting. Let's see, three contracts, one resignation, one retirement, as well as a list of dispersments posted to October one, twenty-twenty-two. Are there any questions on items in the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ongert, thank you for the second. We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, and I'm just going to make sure that the microphone is ready to go here. All right. Motion and second. I will call the roll. Mr. Donaldson.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Ergot.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Mr. Ongert. And Mrs. Swigert votes yes as well. The consent agenda is approved. Thank you, everyone. All right, we move then to reports, and our first report is the curriculum committee report. And I understand that Chair Melanie Ergot is going to give us the report. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, so the curriculum committee met on September twentieth. Mr. Harder shared updates to the graphic design courses at the high schools. These courses have updated text and software, and it will be presented tonight for discussion. Mr. Harder also brought forward new education pathways for K-12 regular education and K-12 special education. This includes revised courses and new courses, and students will also have the opportunity to take some courses for college credit and obtain a daycare certification. This also will be presented tonight for discussion. Dr. Reese reminded us that the out-of-state trips will be here tonight for action. Ms. Maelstrand presented and shared updates to the adopted Second Step cell program for kindergarten through grade eight. She walked through each item that was updated. All the updates were to the digital platform, and they are all listed in board docs if anybody wants to go review them. Dr. Reese presented a few slides on the curriculum and instruction department goals and action steps that align with the goals. This included a literacy core belief document for grade kindergarten through grade eight and a math core belief document for grade kindergarten through grade five. And I don't, what is the next, the next meeting will be, you say that again, right?
Sure, we'll, we'll cover that, we'll cover the next meeting in the board calendar. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ergot about the curriculum committee? Thank you for your report, and we appreciate the committee's work. We move on then to the superintendent's report, and Superintendent Jen Wimmer will give that. Good evening.
Just one more time to thank our staff and others who responded to the medical emergency at the September football game. We put extra Kleenex in the room tonight. You knew there wasn't going to be a dry eye. But it's, it's a great reminder to our families and our board that all of our schools have medical emergency response teams that have completed training and testing to be heart-safe schools through Project Adam, which is a program at Children's Hospital. All these teams are qualified to treat sudden cardiac arrests. So not only do we have staff, but many of our staff live in the community, and they happen to be at the game that evening as well, too. So just thankful for that. That's a continued piece of training. We test on that. We have walkthroughs, then we have drills that they don't know that, that's coming. Amy Breger, our district nurse, reports on those and maintains great certification for all of our buildings in our district. So thankful for those efforts. We had an amazing homecoming week last week. A lot of effort goes in by the students who are creating, whether it's school spirit days, pep rallies, all of that. You'll, you'll see those days happen in every school, kind of across the district gets in on the fun. But thank you to all the staff members, families, and community who also support those events. So we had a pep assembly, a parade. The Spirit Award was won by West with a winning float also by West. That was the volleyball's music through the decades, in case you got a chance to see it. The football game was Friday night. East won that. So we've divvied up the, the winning for homecoming across the schools. And then Saturday culminated with a, a dance. So just thank you to student council, the administrators, and everyone else who joins in to make the week a fabulous success. So also, that evening, they inducted the Athletic Hall of Fame. So those inducted this year include Brent Henshaw. He was the East class of nineteen ninety-three. He was active in wrestling, baseball, soccer, and coaching. Steve Hoffman, East class of nineteen eighty-eight. You might recognize Steve. He usually was over there videotaping meetings before the community did that. So Steve was, again, class of eighty-eight for wrestling. Prudence Pick Way is a distinguished contributor. I can't even begin to tell you the amazing support that she provides for our students and athletic departments. And then Anthony Schloss, West class of twenty-seventeen for baseball, wrestling, and football. So if you're so inclined, you can read about their many accomplishments and contributions on our website. So congratulations to those newly inducted into the Hall of Fame, which is an annual event. It's also National School Lunch Week. It's time to acknowledge all the hard-working nutrition staff for all that they do to provide healthy meals to our students. We're also happy to have new director Tom Dembski, and thank him for his leadership of that team. So again, thank you to all those in nutrition that help make daily lunch the success that it is. I have some congratulations for students. We highlighted national merit scholarships. So congratulations to four national merit scholarship semifinalists. Isaac Bus of East, Zachary Kennigs of West, Madeline Nelman of East, and Abby Nelson, also of East. They will have an opportunity to continue in a competition for just over seven thousand national merit scholarships worth nearly twenty-eight million that will be awarded next spring. Also, we had two students earn the commended student designation, Thaddeus Jamison from East and Zachary Johnson from East. Again, community members can read a little bit more. We do a Wednesday update. Families receive that link directly, but if you go to our website, anyone from the community can pop in their email, and we'll send it to you directly as well. It gives some of these highlights around the amazing things going on in our district. We also did a, kind of a, a brief synopsis. The Wisconsin Assessment Information was released last week. It's from the spring prior, so there's a little bit of delay. Everyone receives their individual student reports. Then they give you school and district reports. And then some of that information is then later released in the form of a district report card. Those aren't out until November. You'll hear from Christina Van Rue, Tina Van Rue, our district assessment coordinator. She puts together presentations and will present as soon as we have our other local assessment fall data. And she'll come before the curriculum committee and the board to share a more comprehensive update. But some of the highlights included our average composite score of our ACT was twenty-one point one. It's the highest score that our students have attained in the last five years, with a, a full point, I believe, that they increased from last year. Students in grade three through eight increased their proficiency rates in all areas of the forward exam, and our largest increase was in the area of social studies. So some great highlights. There's a little bit more in our community news, and we'll continue with more in-depth presentations and then connect it to our district goals and continuous improvement plan. West girls tennis, the doubles team of Ashley Wick and Christina Jones won their match at the WIA Division One Oshkosh West sectional to qualify for the individual state tournament taking place in Madison this coming weekend. We wish them well as they compete at state. Our high school student council is off to a great start. Dr. Dahl, our interim executive principal at the high school, has met with student leadership team. I got to meet with the student leadership team as well. They've really expanded their representation throughout the school. As you recall, dress code was a hot topic at the beginning of the year for our students. It's an item that we're going to move through the student council and their representation. Just a reminder, we didn't change anything in our policy, but there was, you know, some, some aches and pains as they were enforcing that that the kids and administration will work through together. Thus far, they've worked on a junior-senior release program, which begins today, so that's exciting. And they're looking at, again, the dress code will be next. And then they're also looking at some junior-senior spaces on campus as well to revamp those. So I'm looking forward to engaging with our student leaders. I know that their leaders, as well as administration, are working hard together, and I offered my support as a liaison in any way that I can. So looking forward to that throughout the year. I'm sure we can get them in. We'll be working to identify our student speakers over the coming months. So just for any high school student out there, they'll make announcements. We always have representatives from East and West speak at the beginning month of board meetings, and I'm sure we'll invite our student council leadership to give us updates as well. So we're looking forward to having our students back and speaking at our board meetings. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent regarding a report? Thank you very much. We will move then to action items. We have three action items on our agenda tonight, and these are all items that we had discussed previously. We'll start with student travel, out-of-state travel for wrestling and dance. And I believe Dr. Jill Reese, our director of curriculum and instruction, is going to walk us through this one.
Thank you. We are going to just be asking for action on three out-of-state trips. There's two trips for wrestling and one for dance. And we have Erin Felber here to answer any questions about those trips, if you have questions.
So we'd seen these proposals in the past. Are there any changes from the past till now?
So there's a couple changes on the dance proposal because we actually had some inappropriate or inaccurate dates in the proposal, so we updated those dates to the correct dates. And then also at the last board meeting, Board Member Melanie Ergot asked for a change in students going to the nurse on the dance policy. We also changed that piece, too. So otherwise, they all remain the same.
Thank you. Other questions?
Motion to approve out-of-state travel as presented.
Second, motion and second to approve the out-of-state travel for wrestling and dance as presented. Any final discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Ongert. Mr. Donaldson. Ms. Swigert votes yes. Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Ms. Ergot.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
All right. It is approved.
Always let us know how they do with these types of events when you get back.
Enjoy. Good.
Great. Thank you. Our next action item is the twenty-twenty-three Employee Health and Dental Insurance Program. And Mr. Lenny Hansen, our director of HR, is going to walk us through this item. And when I say walk through, this is the same item that we saw last time for discussion, correct?
Correct.
All right.
So yeah, so I'm, Mr. Harder was kind enough to bring up the presentation that was used at the last time we talked about this topic. This is a typical September, October topic that comes before the board as it foreshadows the start of the new benefits plan year that begins on January first. Some of the components of the pieces that we, that play into health insurance have already been approved by the board because they have earlier renewals. So our stop-loss insurance has already been renewed by the board as well as a re-upping of our three-year agreement with our pharmacy carrier, which is Optum RX. What we now move to is setting premiums and plan design for health and dental insurance for for the coming year. Some of the considerations that factored into the decision-making process were in that presentation that we talked about back on September 12th. You know, some of the biggest considerations were that our stop-loss insurance did have its largest increase in recent memory at 35%, that we were looking at altogether a 13% to 15% increase in health insurance costs, which is our largest projected increase in many years. We've gotten, we've been fortunate for many years in a row to come in at more market norm increases of around 8%, but we've, you know, our luck has run out a little bit this year, but that's a projection. So we're still going to keep our fingers crossed that we are going to have a, you know, stronger performance. But again, as a self-insured entity, it's truly up to what the claims end up being. And being a school district, a public entity, it's important for us to use some conservative estimates when making those recommendations. So some of those details were included in that presentation, but when you sum up the proposed adjustments for the coming plan year as far as health insurance, there's kind of a four-fold recommendation. One is a little bit larger premium increase than we had last year. This is more in line with the size of premium increases that we had a couple years ago when we had a little bit larger increase. There's a recommendation to adjust our co-insurance amount from 90% to 80%. I'll just remind everybody, that does not change the total maximum that someone might pay out of pocket, but it changes the rate at which they end up paying that once they surpass their deductible. So I don't want to bore everybody with insurance lingo, but my guess is people are pretty familiar with co-insurance from their own employment. We talked about increasing the emergency room copay to $250, and then adding a free virtual visit option. We've had really strong success with our partnership with Freder, both on our workplace clinic, as well as the fast care service that's housed in their Meyer stores. Those are free options for really anybody who works more than 20 hours a week here in the district, and has really provided a nice way for us to defer some costs that probably would have been much more expensive had someone gone to urgent care or something like that.
Have you gotten good feedback from people who have utilized those?
We've gotten good feedback. We also see good utilization, you know, that, I mean, certainly the feed, it's a two-pronged approach to judging the success of that, right? Like, one is kind of the anecdotal feedback piece, and we get that, I should say, we get feedback both anecdotally as well as surveys that Freder conducts that continue to show strong satisfaction with the service, but the usage also tells us, right? When the usage is high, and it's consistently high now since July of 2020 is when we move over to Freder, that also tells us that there's a decent level of satisfaction there as well.
Okay, it's my experience that this can be very successful, depending on the delivery method and how scheduling is done. Sometimes the window is just so large that it can't accommodate a teacher, for example, who needs a very specific tight window to be seen. So as long as they're happy, then I can accept this.
Yeah, as far as scheduling, what's really nice working with Freder, there's a lot of technology-based scheduling options. You can schedule through MyChart, those sorts of things. And then when we take our clinic, which is, the typical hours are seven to five, and pair that with what fast care provides, which is more into the late evening, like till 8:00 at night, as well as weekends, and then if we can rope in that virtual option as well, we're really providing a true wraparound experience where seven days a week, almost any time of day, you have a free option. Now, can those services take care of anything? No, sometimes you're going to need that specialist, sometimes you're going to need the ER, right? But it does defer away from things like maybe urgent care bills that the employee certainly doesn't want to pay, but you know, you've been stuck there on a Saturday when your kid has to get something, and creates an option to, saves both the employee and the district some dollars. So those were the pieces around the health insurance renewal, the primary components. Obviously, you know, it's never, it's never something we look to, you know, be hopeful about increasing premiums and making some adjustments, but this allows us to stay within the budgetary constraints that we feel are necessary while also maintaining the core components of the plan design. We talked about how then this sets us up for, in the coming fiscal year, to do a real deep dive into the health insurance plan design, collect a lot of employee feedback, and really find something that, you know, whether it's what we currently have or if there's adjustments, something that is going to provide us some sustainability and longevity. The current plan design has been in place for roughly a decade, which is very good, actually, in the insurance market to have that kind of consistency. But at the same time, a decade means it's time to review that design and see if it still meets both the employer and employee's needs in the best way possible. The second component of our discussion then was around dental insurance. We talked about some of the trends there where we've seen some increased usage. Some of that is kind of a post-COVID bump potentially, but also just in general over the last decade and especially the last five years, dental coverage usage has increased significantly, which is really a good thing. It's that more people are getting their preventative exams and things like that, but that has also driven dental costs up at a steady rate. As you might recall, we have not actually increased employee premiums on dental in six years, and the recommendation is unfortunately to break that streak with the increases that you see proposed here with an increase of $8 per month on a family plan and then an increase of $4 per month on a single plan. So I kind of summed up, you know, we had a lengthy discussion back on September 12th, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Otherwise, we bring forth these recommendations for approval, which really sets a table for our November open enrollment.
How long is our contract with the Freder clinic for the virtual and the fast care and the walk-in clinic over there?
So the clinic is a little bit different agreement. That's a three-year agreement that started in July of 2020, so it ends in June of 2023, which is, are we down to nine months or a little under nine months left in that? As far as the fast care agreement or a virtual visit agreement, those are truly month-to-month that you can get.
And is that done through Freder?
Those would be done through Freder in like a direct pay situation. You get a better, a better price on those services when you do kind of a direct bill option versus if we just open it up within the insurance plan in general, because you never know what some of the other virtual visit carriers are going to charge. And if you just say they're all free, well, we know that the Freder price is a pretty competitive price, but there are countless different vendors that do this now, and some of their prices aren't so friendly. So this allows us to kind of drive people towards, you know, where we can find the best negotiated price on that service, while also, you know, having the side benefit of, since it's within that Freder network, it ties in well with communication support if you have seen our clinic or some of those other services. So it gives us a non-committal opportunity to kind of expand how that partnership works.
Do you get good feedback from our employees on the Freder clinic itself?
We do get good feedback. Again, we get good usage data, the survey data that Freder collects is good as well. You know, certainly, there's, you know, always going to be cases where, you know, someone is dissatisfied with a doctor's visit, but consistently, the customer satisfaction ratings are well above 80% when Freder does their satisfaction surveys. And we've talked with Freder as well about continuing to ramp up those data collection processes for getting that feedback, you know.
The last time when we bid this contract for the clinic, do you recall how many bids we got?
We had three, three companies that were interested, and then as we went through the process, you know, we ended up kind of narrowing down from there until we landed on Freder.
Thank you.
Do the health and dental programs as presented, are they competitive when compared to neighboring districts?
Yeah, so we've done quite a deep dive into looking at, especially in the health insurance side, competitiveness from a, so the answer is yes. We are extremely competitive, especially when you just look at the overall employer-employee cost share. You know, everybody's plan design has a different way of getting there, right? But in the end, it comes down to what portion does the employee, you know, responsible, have responsibility for and what portion is the employer? And we found ourselves to be extremely competitive in that market, which I think, you know, certainly employee retention is, there's a lot of factors that play into that, but, you know, we reported recently in our engagement report that our retention continues to be good. You know, certainly, we saw some opportunities in different areas when we brought that data forward, but overall, the retention of our certified staff continues to be strong, and, you know, a competitive health insurance plan, we feel, is one of the ingredients that helps us accomplish that, which obviously, you know, looms on our decision of if you make that insurance plan less valuable, at which point can that have an impact on retention, right? So we're always playing this delicate balancing game, and it's important for us to be very, very mindful of that as we make those adjustments.
Thank you. Other questions?
I do have a question. So it sounds like the, this is mostly just for the Freder clinic. Like, if somebody wanted to see a provider that was in a different network, is that a possibility?
Are you speaking mostly of the virtual option part, or what are you talking about?
Well, is that what Joel was just saying, that you have a contract with Freder? That's only for the virtual option, or that's not for all?
The Freder agreement, we really, we have two agreements in place, and this is proposing a third. So one is for our near-site clinic, which is housed right at the facility, the beautiful new facility over across the street from Walmart on Paradise. So our clinic is actually in their building. So employees who go and use that pay nothing for those visits. Obviously, the benefit to the district is accessible preventative care, right? So you're getting after things before they become an issue, as well as it's a far more, with our usage being the level it is at, it is a far more cost-effective approach than someone going even to their primary doctor, much less going to urgent emergency care. So for our near-site clinic, yes, that's the only option they have. They still can go to any doctor that's within our network, and we have a pretty wide network. The fast care option is a, that is a Freder service, so that's the only one you can do. We don't cover other retail clinics at this point under the plan. And then the virtual option would just be a Freder virtual option. That doesn't mean someone can't go to another virtual option, but you won't have it be entirely covered by the district. So, good question.
So there's an out-of-network copay or deductible?
Yep. So basically, on those virtual ones, it's not really even out-of-network. Basically, you're just paying the fee. You know, it's like a blanking user pay. I'm trying to remember the title for it.
Self-pay?
Self-pay, yep.
I like that you're making the correction to, after six years, to catch up with the monthly premiums. I'd like to see this reviewed every two years. Yearly would be better, but every two years, because that way we don't see such a big jump all at once. And when it's incremental, then it's a little bit easier to predict.
Yeah, it has been reviewed every year. It's more been a matter that the recommendation brought forth has continued to be no change as that, you know, we were able to fit that within the budget. That being said, you're right. Had we just done a dollar each year, you'd be in the same spot, right? But then it doesn't, it's your paycheck deductions, you know, quite to the size of it is. So that's certainly a discussion that's taking place. But, you know, once you get on that streak, you know, you just want to keep that streak going, but I think you're right.
Let's get on the other streak.
But, but you're right, that certainly, had we just done a buck along the way, probably no one would have, you know, had any concern about.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting point, Tony, because I'm not as close a student of this as I should be, but inflation doesn't seem to have hit medical costs as deeply as it has gasoline and all those things. So it'll be interesting in a year from now, if medical costs, you know, if that's, if that lags, what that, what that might look like next year. But I'm guessing, regardless, you examine this every year, at least.
So the benefits consultant we use, we use, you know, takes all these factors into account. Inflation is impacting the medical side. I wouldn't say that we've heard that yet on the dental side, but you know, the dental side, you're talking about smaller numbers and, you know, it's not as, maybe as obvious. But on the medical side, for sure, inflation is impacting. That's part of why we're looking at a larger increase. Inflation both on supplies, which have at times been almost unavailable entirely without paying large charges, but also the supply of labor in healthcare is obviously also an issue. You've heard about nursing shortages and things like that, and the solution that healthcare has is the same solution pretty much anybody has to a labor shortage, which is drive up wages, right? So that is anticipated to impact us in 2023, but I think long-term, you are going to continue to see that market norm bump up a little bit. It's always kind of been that's, you know, on a good year, 6% but more like 8% increase is kind of your market norm across the country increase on health insurance. And I am concerned that, you know, what the phenomenons we, phenomenon we've seen the last couple of years is going to play out with perhaps that market norm long-term being larger than we've been used to.
Other questions?
I just have one more question. Do we offer like a health savings plan for employees?
So our healthcare plan has a health reimbursement account, an HRA instead of an HSA, a health savings account plan, and that's part of that core plan design piece that was established about a decade ago. There's several key differences between HRA and HSA that I'll put you to sleep if I get into right now, but your question is one of the reasons we really do want to do that deep dive into the plan, because if, we've had questions about HSAs before because they carry some unique disadvantages and advantages compared to HRA, and it, you know, that needs to be more deeply analyzed to determine if that's something that we'd want to add, supplant, you know, whatever options there are.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would make a motion to approve the health and dental insurance plan designs and employee premiums as presented. Would there be a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion and second to approve the health and dental insurance plan designs and premiums. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. And Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Engert.
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Ms. Ergot. And Mr. Donaldson.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Appreciate your presentation. We move then to our last action item, which is passenger vehicle purchase. And Mr. Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, will walk us through that, and I believe this also is a topic that we had discussed previously.
This is, I appreciate your time. Two weeks ago, in front of you is a purchase for three Chrysler minivans, Pacificas, at the state pricing, budgeted item, being mindful of this, that we're in tough budget times. It's still, we're still under the belief between the programs and services for our students that these three vehicles would be a nice addition to our fleet, potentially even leading into a savings. Currently, we're leasing, where possible, on a weekly basis, $1,400, excuse me, monthly basis, $1,400 for a similar vehicle. So state pricing, this is not something that we can walk to the Chrysler dealer and receive, but through Ewald, it's the only option we have at this time unless there is an opportunity to buy a slightly used or even a rare new 10-passenger vehicle. Seriously, keep your eyes open. And for you guys and the audience, I stopped at the threshold the other day and had a chat with their director, but, and we just missed out by about a year on some that they sold. But thank you for the consideration of this.
All right. Any questions on this item? I will say that actually, we have a fleet of vehicles at my employer, and this is one of the vehicles that's, vehicle models that's in the fleet, and it's actually very popular and also seems to be very versatile, so.
I will move to approve the purchase, the recommended purchase of three Chrysler Pacifica seven-passenger minivans at a cost of $113,733.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to accept the recommended purchase of the three vans for $113,733. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Donaldson.
Yes.
Ms. Ergot. Ms. Rebholz.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Swigert votes yes. Mr. Engert.
Yes.
And Ms. Justman.
Yes.
All right. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We move then to discussion items, and our first discussion item is textbook updates for graphic design courses. And Mr. Tim Harder, our Director of Technology, will walk us through that item. Good evening.
All right, good evening, board members. It's that time of the year where you often see updates in some of our curricular pieces, let it be for myself, Dr. Jill Reese, or others in the district. Before you tonight, we have two different topic items that we presented to the curriculum committee first. Our first item is to recommend to update our Adobe Photoshop Illustrator and Adobe InDesign books that we utilize as part of our graphic design pathway at both high schools. As part of our graphic design pathway, all of our courses are articulated for technical college credit at Marine Park Technical College as part of that consortium piece and allowabilities. So our students on campus here, starting their freshman year in that graphic design pathway, have the opportunity for them to earn college credits, often at three-credit intervals throughout the courses as they go through that pathway. We currently are using an older version of the textbook, and for And for us to stay in compliance with our agreement with Marine Park Technical College and to offer this as a technical college credit, we would need to upgrade to the newest version, which is what you see on the screen and which is posted in Board Docs for you this evening. We currently use the textbook that is listed. This is just reflecting the updates in the textbooks, reflect the update in the software over the years. It also includes an online web edition that would go with it and go from there. And so that would allow us to stay compliant and still offer those technical college credits here for our students at West Bend High Schools. So any questions on the course textbook piece this evening?
The fifty-three hundred dollars is in the budget?
Yes. Yep. So we would look at that budget through both curriculum and instruction, and we also utilize what is called CT incentive grants, Career Technical Education incentive grants. That is a fund and a, and an act that started probably five years ago by the state of Wisconsin to encourage schools to have students earn industry recognized credentials. And so when our students earn those credentials here, let it be in graphic design or other areas, we receive a dollar amount that we apply for through a grant every year. So those two funds would pay for that.
Perfect. Thanks.
Kurt, did you have an item?
I just had one comment and one question, just a comment from the business community to make students career ready. I mean, this is not only technical college credit, but people taking this in high school will make themselves career ready. Coming from the business community, Adobe is, is known out there, Photoshop, there's, in every company, there's, there's graphic people and graphic design people needed. So that's my comment. The question is, how many students take advantage of this in a high school setting to date?
Yeah. So in our, in our introductory class, we're seeing anywhere from five to six sections a year. So that maxes out at thirty students, plus we have advanced courses. So we're talking in the two to three hundred range in a school year that will take advantage of that.
Okay. Thanks.
I know there are others on this board that are more tech savvy than me. I recognize the name Adobe, so I'm assuming that that's a standard in the industry.
That is a standard industry standard.
Still is, yeah.
Still is. All right. I know Adobe Acrobat, but after that, it's a little, it's a little iffy. Thank you. No, just wanted, just wanted, just wanted to be sure. It looks like this is industry standard, so thank you. Any other questions? All right. As this is a discussion item, we'll see you at the next meeting for consideration of approval. We'll move then to the next discussion item, which is education program of study updates. And Mr. Harder will walk us through that one as well.
You bet. As part of federal legislation called Carl Perkins Funding, in the Carl Perkins Act, school districts are required to evaluate their career and technical education programs on a regular basis. And so we do a comprehensive local needs assessment every two years. As part of that, that engages our students, that engages our business partners, that engages our parents and so forth across that. And as part of our process over the last year and a half, we have been studying our education pathway. And when I say education pathway, it is very predominantly childcare based at the moment. And so I'm going to pop up on the screen the courses that our students have as their current opportunity, if they are interested in becoming some sort of an educator in their career, let it be all the way down to our littlest of students in early childhood through potentially want to be a college professor or teach at a technical college. And you see in an introductory educational practices course, a parent and child development course, and then that branches itself through all the way up to, in the bottom right hand corner, a work-based learning experience where our students would go work at a daycare. This pathway through our, through our feedback and through our conversations and looking at workforce data, not just in Washington County, the WOW Counties, which is Washington, Ozaki and Waukesha Counties, and then Southeast Wisconsin. The, the group has brought forth some recommended changes. And so as part of this, I want to give a, a huge thank you to Brenda O'Brien, who's our new career education and ACP coordinator in the district, along with Amber Halepka, who teaches predominantly most of our, our education pathway courses, as they were instrumental in reviewing this, along with our family and consumer science team. So with this, after reviewing our pathway, looking at those different pieces of data, we are recommending a couple of changes to our current pathway. The first one being that we want to streamline that childcare pathway. It currently takes our students too long to get from the beginning to the end. So as our students work through their schedules, as they start to figure out their career interests, their freshman, the sophomore year, they aren't able to complete that pathway unless that student really gets that going right away. So we have a recommendation this evening that will streamline and shorten that pathway down a little bit, provide some optimal pieces for our students. Also through the feedback over the years to Mrs. Halepka in the classroom, and when we look at our data of where our kids are going on after high school, we have no way to serve the needs of our students who want to be K-12 teachers. And so there aren't courses that currently exist within that. And so we are coming forth tonight as a recommendation to add a K-12 general education pathway for our students and a K-12 special education pathway for our students who are interested in becoming educators in one or the other, and/or if you really know what you're going to do early on, the potential to take both pathways and set yourself up for some good success going forward. And so as we look at those recommended changes this evening, one of the things that we want to do is we want to open up our elective beginning course in that pathway to our freshmen. Currently, that course doesn't start till their 10th grade year, so our students are losing one opportunity of taking that elective. So our freshmen are typically afforded two hours a day or two hours a semester of an elective opportunity in their schedule. And so we want to give that opportunity to take this introductory course of parent and child development at that point in time. We would remove family and community relationships from the childhood pathway and change that course to a working in the service industry. So our family consumer science department not only serves the education pathway, it serves culinary, it serves interior design, a lot of variety in there. And so working in that service industry is a relevant topic for students who may be interested in that and career education. And so in the presentation, there's linked to course syllabus and the textbook, that information would go on it. But it would really provide an opportunity for us to focus with our students on community trends and resources for students who want to work in those service industries in their communities and help them with those skills and those background knowledge as we go forward. And so we would remove that out of the pathway as a requirement and create that a standalone class for any of the students to participate in. We would also then need to update our textbooks, similar to what I just presented on the graphic design side of things for staying in compliant and working with Marine Park Technical College. We would update our textbooks to the versions that you see on the screen, one B for our TC Foundations of Early Childhood Education course, and then our Infant and Toddler Development course at the same time also. And so we would bring those recommended changes forward this evening. So when we're done, we talked about streamlining that pathway down before. We had six plus classes in that pathway for a student. Now a student can start as early as their ninth grade year as a, in the Parent and Child Development course, and then their 11th and 12th grade year, they can start working their way into those different required courses as part of that pathway. And so those students can end taking current, currently their 12th grade year, Infant and Toddler Development and Child Services Co-op. We have numerous students out each semester who do that in businesses around Southeast Wisconsin, typically within Washington County. We've had students placed locally with the Y, Living Word, other different places in the community where they're earning not only, you know, or excuse me, high school credit, they're earning a state certification, they're also learning and working out in the environment at that point in time. So that would be our updated recommended pieces to just that early childhood piece. I'll pause there and answer any questions before I move on to the rest of it.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Okay. So as part of this, I'd, I'd mentioned that we don't have a K-12 education pathway for our students. We have our students who want to volunteer in classrooms, they want to help a teacher out, but there's no real program of study for them to work from their freshman year all the way through their senior year, set them up successful for their life after high school at that point in time. So Brenda, myself, Mrs. Halepka, others, we started looking at options. And this goes back almost a year and a half to two years, that we've gone back and looked at a variety of different options. When we go into researching these options, in career and technical education, we will look at a couple of different things. We look at workforce data so that we know we're meeting the needs of what we have. While I can turn around and ask Mr. Hanson right there if we have a workforce data need in education and teachers, but we also see it throughout Wisconsin. We will look to make sure that we offer some sort of poster, secondary credit within each pathway. So those pathway courses require us to have an intro and at least an advanced course. And somewhere in that pathway, we want our students to earn post-secondary credit. Typically, in career and technical education, you see that tied to the technical college. Sometimes it is tied to four-year universities. So our project lead, the Way Sequence in Engineering, is tied to MSOE. In our case, we're bringing forth some options. One is tied to UW Oshkosh and one is tied to UW Whitewater at that point in time. So we are presenting a, a pathway that starts with an introduction to educational practices, helps students understand the variety of different careers that exist within education, from kindergarten on the way through 12th grade to specialized areas, to special education, to school psychologists, speech and language, all those different pieces that you may see as part of that. And so you'll see the textbook information, syllabus linked there. And then we're going to split that offering into two. We're going to have students decide if they want to go into K-12 education, or if they want to go and pursue some sort of a special education degree. And they can mix and match if they want between the two. We are proposing two courses that would be taught by our staff here in the West Bend School District, Interc education policy and individual school and society. Those would be offered as known as CAT, which is through UW Oshkosh. Our students would earn or have the potential to earn three college credits for each one of those courses. We would then look to partner with UW Whitewater and their program, they have a different acronym, so they call theirs PI. And so their opportunities there would be each student could again earn three credits in each of those classes, and they would have the opportunity to take those virtually. And so we would not offer them onsite currently for our students. However, if we ever did get to the point where we saw an influx of students and we would consistently see that we would have thirty students a year taking that course, we would work with Mrs. Melstrand and the Student Services Department and Mr. Hanson to look at what qualified teaching staff we have for them. Typically, to teach a college course, you have to have a master's in that content area. So not just a master's in general education sometimes, but you would have to have a master's in special education. So those courses would be offered through the virtual option, through UW Whitewater at that point. And then this would all end with an opportunity for a work-based learning experience. We want our students to have the ability to go out and work in the field that they want to go in, so they get that real experience and decide, is this what's right for me before I go on to tech school, go on to college and so forth? So you would actually, we have a course called Mentorship in Education currently. We would actually update that to co-op in the classroom, align that to DPI credentials, so students would leave with a certification from the state and provide those learning experiences right here in-house in our school district. So myself, as a high school student, could be going all the way down to the kindergarten classroom with Mr. Ongert and working my hours there. If I wanted to be a high school special education teacher, I could also be working with a high school special education teacher for the semester or year of that course. So when you start to look at these options, the special education pathway, you start with that introductory course. Our students can take them however they want and whatever order in the middle, and then end up with that work-based learning experience pieces. And so they're completely online, they're asynchronous courses, we would support our students through that, help them apply for the college aspects if they would like to. This is a look at that K-12 general education pathway. This is the one from UW Oshkosh. The unique thing that we liked about this opportunity for our students is if we all of a sudden had a couple of years or a year where we had not enough students to run the course here face to face, based upon our enrollment numbers, our students would still have the opportunity through the early college credit program to apply and take those courses virtually. So they don't lose in the middle of this pathway that all of a sudden there isn't enough enrollment here for them to take it face to face. The students can continue then, at that point in time, to work their way forward and go through those different pieces and continue and complete that pathway at that point in time. The other piece that I forgot to mention with the special education pathway is that when a student completes the process of going through this pathway and successfully complete all of those, those two courses there and some work-based learning experiences, they have the potential to apply for their special education paraprofessional certification through the state. And so we would work with Mr. Hanson, Mrs. Melstrand to sign off on that. And so that means they could be in college, working for a school district, they could be theoretically graduated as a senior in the following summer, coming back and working for us for summer school at that point in time as a paraprofessional also to give that experience. And then the last couple of slides on here just outline the budget pieces related to the, the two, the variety of textbooks that are needed as part of both the college classes. We did this based upon thirty students. We don't expect thirty students per class to start the school year with a total of twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-three. Again, to Mr. Ongert's earlier question, that would be a piece that would go through both CNI and that CT incentive grant. This is also a multi-year budget because we would have this year and next year for some of those changes at that point in time. So any questions that I can answer for you this evening?
Any questions? Kurt?
Just a question on how, I think this is outstanding that we're proposing to expand this just because of the need coming up that we're seeing actually all over the state and the country. How many other districts in Wisconsin offer a similar program to this?
I don't have an exact number. Many are growing though. So I know Appleton has one in the Fox Valley. They even incentivize theirs. So if a student goes through the pathway, they give them an interview and they come back. We've been early conversations with Mr. Hanson about how do we incentivize kids to come back here? So if we're going to put the effort and the money in and giving them these experiences, can we incentivize them to come back here? Many school districts offer one class through UW Oshkosh or through UW Whitewater, or maybe two. Many don't offer both opportunities there. So we're looking to set the bar high and really give our kids the best of both opportunities. If a student completed both pathways, they could actually leave here with twelve college credits and their paraprofessional license before they ever left high school at that point in time. So we're going to set that bar high and go beyond just the one or two courses.
Other questions? All right. Since this is a discussion item, we'll see you at the next meeting as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we were just checking. We have, we have a number of student representatives. We're always great, glad to see.
They're high achievers.
Yes. We always wanted to be sure. Sometimes for a government class, I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, but we have some students who will attend and, but it looks like these folks are, yeah. All right. Moving on, our next discussion item is the budget update 2022, 2023. And Mr. Sarno?
Yeah, do you want to jump in?
Yeah.
Yep, please do.
We'll start with Superintendent Wimmer.
So before he gets into the meat of the budget update, I wanted to speak around a couple pieces that came forward as part of public discussion during our budget hearing. We talked, and, and there was, we talked about safety prior going into that meeting, and it certainly came up at the annual meeting as well. We had an individual make some amendments. I had the opportunity to speak with him after and talk through some of those things and those ideas and concepts. So I just wanted to talk with you, the board, around how those could still be integrated into our work as we move forward with the budget process. One of the pieces was around increasing police liaisons. I'll apologize for Chief Dearing. He couldn't be with us this evening. He has a budget meeting down the street. We met two Mondays ago as part of our ongoing shared training that we were brought in by the Department of Justice. We actually hosted locally at the police department, had the opportunity to do our cross-training and then speak around expansion of police liaisons or police-supported positions with there. So just a reminder that our current SLOs, they're called here, school liaison officers, they're co-funded by, we, we contribute to a portion through our, our Fund 80 and other pieces of the budget, and then the police give a portion too because they're a police department employee and they work, you know, that kind of nine, 10 months with us under our umbrella at, you'll recall that, that memorandum of understanding at a reduced rate of sorts. So we, we talked about that. We talked about the staffing. I asked and expressed the board's interest in, in bringing him and our team together for a work session specifically around the topic of school safety. I know President Swigerfoltz and I have talked with the county office, I've talked with the sheriff, and then recall that we also have another chief of Jackson that we work together. Those are our three responding units. And in our training the other day, our police was, our fire was represented as well. So we talked about some of those efforts. So I know board members, I've been asking you to look at calendars so we could schedule that and dig into that to have that representation so that we could talk about and assess need and then look at ideas and opportunities regarding that. There was another piece that was spoken around regarding safety elements. There were some specific locks. Again, taking that opportunity two weeks ago when we met Dave Ross, our Buildings and Grounds, was there with myself as well as police, fire, some of the things, you know, they're intricate. You can imagine in, in public spaces, kind of all the, the rules and regulations we need to follow around those. So there's some opportunity with some different devices, maybe not some specific ones that were noted. So we'll talk about that. One of the things Dave and I talked about was accelerating the presentation on the capital improvement budget, those pieces that you see. Generally, he starts that work in December. We'll accelerate that into November and we'll categorize all the safety items separately so that the board can speak to those. Again, we'll address probably some high-level pieces as we go through any board work session on safety, but then we'll dig in through that capital piece and set those aside so that you can strategize and prioritize in a unique way on that piece. So again, just kind of going through some of those sentiments from our community around heightened awareness and needs around school safety and how we can still kind of post that meeting, you know, bring those back into the discussions. There was one other item that was brought forward, which was around a specific request for an independent for an independent agency to look at a facility study that was completed a couple of years ago with both a community group as well as an agency. And we talked about some of the finances behind that. There was a target of $50,000. We would have to go to a full request for proposal process on that, which we're happy to do at the direction of the board. Once we review kind of the pieces we had, what years they were completed, what specifically you want that scope to be, and then we can engage in that process through our regular budgets. There was no need to do any specific specialty work with the levy on that. So I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we can integrate those pieces that we heard and had representation from our community express interest in. Any questions on those components or how we intend to bring those forward in that timeline?
Questions?
Great, we'll do that. Like I said, fill out those calendars for potentially that October prioritization of a safety meeting with again our responders in session and then we'll up that November around capital improvements and specifically safety items. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sarnol.
Thank you. In addition to that, and thank you so much Superintendent Wimmer, I wanted to make sure this is an opportunity to provide some additional feedback as we're wrapping up the budget. With two weeks from tonight, I'll be presenting complete information that will be the final budget, mill rate and the levy in the district. So I don't anticipate any very large changes. We've projected fairly closely for a number of years now the property values. I think our state, state aid, that's one of the two large funding sources, has been estimated two different ways, actually three different ways that we've been within $50,000 of that number on all three examples. So one of, one of the large pieces, I wanted to make sure where the resolution number one, which was the tax levy two weeks ago from tonight, much of that was advisory. It was understanding what the community supports. The one binding piece of that though is the $1.725 million for our capital projects fund. So that is a binding dollar amount. We've stuck to that. This is one of those areas as well that over the last couple of years, we've been able to put money between that Fund 41. We've also spoken about Fund 46. They do serve two different purposes. I went into a little bit of detail two weeks, two weeks ago, but we've been able to build up some fund balances in that area. And so one of the large pieces as we're wrapping up this year's budget, just trying to make sure, as, as Mr. Hanson indicated, we're watching things even closer than ever. Health insurance, substitute costs, utilities. We don't want to come back in May or the spring and have an amended budget where we didn't anticipate something to make sure that we have everything covered. But one of the areas that I did want to speak about tonight, the first one was are there any other areas of the levy outside of the revenue limit similar to the Fund 80, which Superintendent Wimmer spoke about, where we need to make an adjustment? So you got, you guys are underway with appropriate process, next steps. The one piece that I did additionally want to speak about was that Fund 41, Fund 46, which are our two facilities designated funds. Between the two of them at year end, we'll have about $5.1 million of fund balance to, you know, we can use that at any point. There's a waiting period for Fund 46 that we're two, three years past by now, but the intent was to use those in conjunction with some other projects strategically to make sure that they were being utilized well, not having to redo space in a very short period of time. But one of the, one of the pieces is we're developing the budget. We've had discussion at our cabinet level. There's about $750,000 right now that's out of the general fund, again, within the revenue limit, but those expenditures could be placed into Fund 41 or Fund 46. I wanted just a little bit of feedback on that. The purpose behind that, again, we've been able to build up that fund balance a little bit. The general fund has absorbed those expenditures for a couple of years, but that would allow us then, under the next biennial state budget, to have a little bit of a softer landing of not knowing what that next revenue limit will look like. We have proposals from State Superintendent Underlee, but depending on elections and what might happen at the state level, just allowing a little bit of flexibility within the general fund budget that would allow for more dollars to be carried over into 2023, '24 by all means. Budgets, budgets are the best estimate. At a point in time, things change, which is why we do come forward in the spring for an amended budget. We can continue to monitor that, but at this time I, I'm just curious if, if there's any sentiments of the board specifically.
Couple of questions. If you moved the $750,000 to Fund 41, does it have to be spent in the 2022, 2023 calendar year? So does that now 1.7 million become 2.1 million?
It would become a larger dollar amount, but that doesn't mean that it has to be spent. The only thing that has to happen with these two funds is that our revenue goes into Fund 41 of 1.725 million dollars, a little over 1.7. So the expenditures, again, we can play that by year, maybe by spring.
And the reason you said that is because that is a binding resolution that we just passed.
Correct, yep.
And that does not change. You would still put the 1.75.
Yep, correct.
And then we can legally put another 750 even though that didn't go before the community?
These would be expenditures, so you can't put additional dollars. We could place additional dollars into Fund 46. That isn't governed by the resolution. These would be on the expenditure side. So using some of that fund balance to bridge ourselves into the 2023, '24 school year.
Then the other option is Fund 46. We're past that waiting period of investment dollars, so this would not fall under a new, new dollars don't necessarily mean the start of a new clock.
Correct, yep. And again, as health insurance is performing better than we anticipated, we took a little bit of a conservative approach to that. We're self-funded, depending on claims that are coming in, you know, maybe is where we're at this point in time saying, yes, let's do that. Let's, let's consider this, bring that forward in two weeks. Maybe we won't need that full dollar amount. There's, there's some of the variables that go into the budget that if it does perform better than anticipated, we have some unexpensed dollars, that would soften that even a little bit more, allowing for some additional flexibility.
Other thoughts?
I just got a question. Clarifying for what we're voting on next week and more important for the taxpayer. So the levy that we're voting on next week, which sets the mill rate, will that be in effect when people get their tax bills for their tax money? A lot of people pay it before the end of the year or they wait till January 31st and then July 31st they have the option. So I just want to clarify for the community that what we're voting on next week is going to affect the immediate kind of payment they're going to have to make, which again is a good news that the mill rate that we talked about at the annual budget would be going down.
So from $7.97 that it had been from the past several years down to a projected $6.28, $6.29. The information that we're still waiting for, final property values, final state aid information, final voucher information from our private schools, but dependent on some of those, I'm not projecting a large swing that yes, those property tax bills that are mailed out here within the next couple of months directly from the municipalities would reflect this new mill rate that you will be voting on in two weeks. Thank you.
When this item comes for action in a couple of weeks, I am fine with either option you presented. I guess I would, I would ask that you come with a more direct recommendation. If there's capital projects that, you know, we could use the money for and it makes more sense to put in 41, because I, I always view that fund as more of an immediate project fund versus the 46, which is more of kind of a savings. So I guess I'd, I'd ask you and the superintendent and, and Dave Ross to kind of give me a stronger recommendation one way or the other in a couple of weeks, but I'm fine with either option that you've brought tonight.
I appreciate that.
I think it makes sense to soften the blow for the next calendar year by getting this money out of the general fund.
I agree. I mean, I think I'm open to seeing, to seeing it. We'll have a chance to see it in a couple of weeks and I agree with the idea of a recommendation. Other thoughts?
I appreciate that.
All right, of course. Anything else?
I'm not on this topic, but if you'd like me to step away, I think I've got the next one.
That's okay. We'll move to the next item then, which is school bus sale.
Yeah. As, as we've had discussions over the last probably year or two, maybe even longer, CDL drivers, licensed drivers are difficult to find. That's something that at this point in time, we had two last year, both beyond their retirement age, very appreciative of the years of service that they've put in, but we have a fleet of four yellow buses, legal school buses, ranging in size from smaller 32-passenger up to 72-passenger vehicles. Per board policy, 690, which was established this last spring, is actually on last year's resolution to utilize this policy more heavily coming forward because I'm anticipating the sale of these buses would be in excess of $10,000. That's a part of that policy. But again, we have four vehicles, no drivers at this point in time. I think we've had a posting or trying to solicit recruit drivers. We're, we're not a bus company. Right Way is a bus company. There are others out there that specialize in this. It would be my recommendation that we proceed with listing these four vehicles on the Wisconsin Surplus online auction website. I've been in communication with that individual. There's no cost for us using it. All seller fees or all fees are from the seller, the buying agent. They've sold in excess of 50 buses over the last several years. I'm looking for a right placement of these. We can put a reserve on this. I didn't want to disclose what that reserve might be because there could potentially be some bidders in the audience for these.
Party bus.
Vehicles. And, and I did not, I, I know that there will probably be interest by other bus companies, maybe even some that submitted bids to us a couple of years ago. But the Wisconsin surplus is just a, it's, it's a general site access to everybody from a staff member that wants to park one up at their land up north to a legitimate bus company that, that can utilize this for their existing fleet. But I want to just, discussion would come forward in two weeks for approval to sell these vehicles.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you don't want to give like a blue book estimate for the value of each of these because you don't want to influence what we might expect to receive in a bid?
I would be happy to find a blue book value and that's what we're trying to establish. The actual reserve is let's say the blue book value for one of these vehicles was $7,500, but we could put a reserve of $5,000 in the auction and if it didn't meet the reserve, it just gets canceled and we could go out again and do it, do it all over. But I, I would like to make sure that we do maximize our return on these. They're not an asset at this point in time. Not many vehicles are, but we're paying insurance on them. Snow is going to fly and we want to get rid of these as soon as possible, but make sure that we're maximizing what, what value is in them. Hope that, does that answer your question?
Yes, I, I like the idea of having a reserve, especially with the shortage of all vehicles in general. They might be worth more than we realize and I actually do have experience buying a school bus for the Volunteer Center of Washington County and we paid $10,000 for it.
Yeah. Was it, was it obviously used?
Yes.
Yeah, brand new. They're.
Yeah, they're more, but I was just shocked that you could get any kind of vehicle for $10,000 that could seat that many people.
I, I received a slideshow from the gentleman that handles this at this organization and he sent, I think there are 62 slides on it and it ranged everywhere from a 2004 with 300,000 miles, gas, not diesel, which would, you know, diesel wouldn't be very many miles, but for $3,500 all the way up to a 2015 with 80,000 miles for $17,500. So we're going to, we're going to try to do what we can here. I didn't want to act, obviously. I won't even list this until I get approval from you. I didn't want to list it, have it out for a couple of weeks because that is the period that they recommend it is 14 days, but let's see what we can do.
I'm supportive, oh, sorry, I'm supportive of this. When, when we dispose of inventory like this, and I try to think of scenarios where we would say a year or two down the road, oh, wow, I wish we would have, I wish we had these again. But I guess I'll direct this to administration in general. I mean, it sounds like we've had, we've had success with partnering with a bus operation that does that professionally. And so if there was a need, we largely would fill it by approaching a vendor like Right Way or whoever it would happen to be at the time. I mean, is that the strategy? In other words, if, wow, we wish we would have had these because we have a need, the answer is yeah, but we really would rather do it through a vendor.
Not only, just not only that, my experience is, and I can remember asking when I first came here, I'm like, why are these buses parked out back? And then they were dormant during COVID. We don't have the mechanics that are needed on staff. They should have been driven every month. This should have been all the preventative maintenance, the inspection. That's not happening as regular as if this were part of a fleet where that is their primary business. So not just the driver availability, but the maintenance of a fleet to a standard that we expect and place in our contracts is really important.
What's the expense of insurance and maintenance annually for each of these vehicles?
I will include that in a follow-up communication. I don't have that off the top of my head. What I do know is one of the vehicles does not, will not meet inspection as of December. And so I think it's about a $7,000 to $8,000 door, you know, that back school bus door, which is rather important with all the electronics. So that will go into consideration in addition with Superintendent Wimmer, which was a spot on. The second piece is this vehicle fleet as is should, should not be operating. We've not, in, in the original budget, the two prior years, we had a bus replacement, again, very expensive, $100, $120,000. We chose not to buy them because we were getting little indicators that we would not have any CDL licensed drivers with the bus endorsement any longer, which is why we didn't make the investment. I knew Nancy Deepenbauer, who's been our transportation coordinator for 18, 19 years, was nearing the end of her career, but this fleet in itself, I would probably be standing in front of you regardless if we have four new buses and these with four drivers because these vehicles need to be sold. That's just plain and simple.
That's good perspective. Thank you. Other questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
We'll bring this back for action in the future meeting. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our future agenda items, board meeting calendar. So we have a number of meetings scheduled. Curriculum Committee will meet on October 18 and November 14. On October 18th, it'll be at 8:30 a.m. here at the Education Service Center and on November 14, I'm sorry, November 15, it also will be 8:30 a.m. So it's October 18 and November 15. Then we have regular board meetings on October 24 and November 14, both at 5:30 p.m. here at the Education Service Center. Superintendent Wimmer talked about the board work session that if we could all respond to the survey, we'll see if we can schedule a board working session to discuss matters related to school safety. Any other questions on our, on our board meeting calendar? All right, and then our last regular agenda item, items for follow-up and communication. Any items for follow-up or communication to bring forward? All right, hearing none there. We have reached the end of our planned agenda. We have a matter that is appropriate to discuss in executive session and so I would move that we adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851CG and that is specifically to discuss performance, employment and legal counsel. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Ungert?
Yes.
Mr. Revholtz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Swigerfords, yes. Thank you for those in attendance. We are now officially adjourned into executive session. We appreciate your attendance.
Superintendent, where would you like us?
Right upstairs. Do?